Okay, Ryan Fisher. Jason Tamura. Angel Lopez. Esther Acosta.
Here.
Patricia Solorio.
Here.
Angie Bolden. Robert Doyle.
Here.
Ivan Teniente. Jennifer Camacho Tivursio.
Here.
Tim Seifert. José Aguilera Galván.
Here.
Ronald Jacobs.
Here.
Rosalie Marquez.
Here.
And Isaac Berumen.
Here.
Okay, and just to confirm, the ones I do not have present are Angel Lopez, Tim Seifert, Ivan Teniente, and Angie Bolden. If you are here and, I'm sorry?
Tim's here.
Oh, Tim is there. Okay, there. I see Tim. Thank you. Ivan, Ivan, Angie, and Angel, if you are here and you are not able to speak for whatever reason, just go ahead and let us know in the chat. Thank you.
Rosie, I just let Angel in.
Okay, yeah, Angel's in. And Ivan texted me for the passcode, so I texted it to her, so she's trying to get into.
Okay. In the meantime, if we want to go ahead and if you haven't already reviewed the minutes from the last meeting, if you were, if you were here at the last meeting, and then I will make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
I second it.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Hi.
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 All opposed? And there should be no abstentions, since I believe everybody was at the last meeting as well. Okay, moving forward.
It's all yours.
On your screen. Thank you, Ryan. On your screen, you can see the names of the members of our committee. And also, let me just introduce ourselves in case you are not aware of who we are. My name is Rosi Rojo, and I'm part of the Special Projects Team, and joining us tonight is also Alicia Vela and Tash Luag, and they are also part of the Special Projects Team. Next slide, please. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to hear from you, the applicants, about your proposed programs and activities. Each applicant has already gone through a site visit with members of the Block Rents Advisory Committee. Agencies will have a total of three minutes to speak about the agency and the proposed program. Following those three minutes, then, the committee members will have an opportunity to ask any additional questions or get clarification on anything that's either in the application that was submitted or the site visit or anything that was mentioned during tonight's meeting. Next slide, please.
And Rosie, I just wanted to add that Ivan and Angie has joined us. It looks like we have everyone.
Oh, thank you. Wonderful. Thank you very much, Alicia, for letting me know. Okay, and just one last thing related to tonight's order. We will be going in alphabetical order, just to let you know. We do have kind of a structured format tonight to make it easier and just streamline the process. Attendees should remain muted at all times unless you are speaking. There will not be an opportunity to share screens or play any pre-recorded audio visuals tonight. There will be an opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting for non-agedized meetings. So tonight's meeting, tonight's agendized items are basically to go over your application and iron out any last-minute comments, questions, concerns related to your application and the proposed project or activity. But if you have something aside from that that you would like to let not just the committee members know, but everybody in attendance tonight know about, then you're more than welcome to share that during our public comment period at the end of this meeting. And if you can, if you can please change your name in Zoom along with your agency's name. That way, it's easier for us to be able to, when we go back and look at the recording, look at, you know, put the name with the agency. And also, if you can, please, if you have the ability to do so from either, you know, your computer or your cellphone, if you could please enter your name and your email address in the chat, that will just allow us to be able to add you to an email group in case we have any additional information we'd like to send out to you related to what happens tonight. We can do so and send it out to not just you, but everybody who's in attendance tonight. So it's just our way of being able to stay in touch with you throughout this process. More than likely, we have everybody's information, but once in a while, we'll get these meetings forwarded to somebody else who was not on any of our other lists. So we just want to make sure we don't miss you. Next slide, please. So just a reminder that no decision will be made tonight regarding allocations tonight. It's just an opportunity to hear from you when the committee will discuss what its recommendations are for the City Council. That will take place on Thursday, this coming Thursday at 5:30. And during that meeting, agencies will be able to observe the meeting. They will not be able to speak, but they will be able to listen in and watch the process. The deliberations on Thursday will be for both public services and capital applications. And then, the committee's recommendations will go before the City Council in a public hearing fashion on Tuesday, April 5. Next slide, please. So on your screen, you can see the city-funded priorities. They were adopted last August, I believe, by the City Council. And the first one is to prevent homelessness, address critical needs, and assist at rescue the elderly and underserved populations. The second is to expand educational development opportunities. The third is to provide affordable housing, and the fourth is to revitalize existing neighborhoods. Now, we should just make sure I mention two things. One, the first thing is, is that you can see the note at the bottom. It says, "The priorities are not listed in order of importance." The reason we have the numbers is just for referencing purposes, but we're not necessarily prioritizing one over another. It's just, those are the four adopted priorities that the City Council felt are the biggest need currently in our community. And then, two, the other thing I wanted to clarify is that for public services, only priorities one and two will be considered for CDVG funding. Also, to put things in perspective, here is how things are shaking out this year. We received 21 CDVG public service applications with a total ask of over $400,000. We are estimating to only be receiving about $244,000 for this coming year. And for the, for capital, we received five CDVG capital projects totaling more than $1.6 million, and we do estimate to have a little under $1.1 million. Next slide, please. So, committee, all members should have copies of each site visit team report, and you should have any, should you have any questions on it, please bring it up during the question and answer portion. At this time, do any committee members have a conflict of interest that may require them to recuse themselves from participating in any discussion? No? Okay.
Real quick, it's Ron Jacobs. If we get to, for Meals on Wheels, I don't know if this might be a conflict of interest, but I used to be a volunteer, and I did participate with them at one point, probably about a year ago.
Okay, you were a volunteer. You never received any?
No.
You never worked for them as an employee, receiving money?
No, it was just a volunteer basis as far as delivering the meals.
Okay. We'll double-check with our city attorney, but for tonight, it should not be an issue. And I don't anticipate it being an issue or Thursday either, but we'll double-check with our city attorney on that. But thank you, Ron. Appreciate that. Let me write that down. Okay, next slide, please. All right. Does, do any of the committee members have any other questions before we move forward? All right, does any, does any agency, does anybody joining us tonight have any questions before we proceed?
My question is that you're going to go in the order, alphabetical order in terms of agencies, and allow them an opportunity to speak at that time?
Correct. So, yes, so we will allow, and it's three minutes total. So if you have, for example, three people speaking from your agency, it will be three minutes total. So each person would have, if you wanted to divvy it up equally, one minute each. But then, following that, then it'll be open to answering any questions that any of the committee members might have that stem from either the application or the site visit.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Let's get started. The first one will be Alliance for Pharmaceutical Access. Now, I should, sorry, I should add that you do not have to speak. If you feel there's nothing else you need to add, you definitely don't have to. And if this was not a requirement to be here tonight, so we just put everybody who submitted an application, we put them down, but if they're not here, it's, it, it's not a penalty. They didn't have to be here. This is just more of an, giving agencies an additional opportunity to clarify, add clarification or adding the information to their application. So with that, Alliance for Pharmaceutical Access.
Thank you so much. It is Elizabeth Snyder. I am the new board chair for APA, and I also have Annelle Calderon. She's our new executive director. And I've met some of you in the past. I see some of my colleagues, and so I'd like to say hello this evening. Promise, I'll only take just a few minutes and let you remember and know who we are. We've been in existence since 2004. And the Alliance for Pharmaceutical Access is a really simple organization. What we do is, we work as the middleman and the linkage between all the major pharmaceutical companies that provide free medication, and we help our clients in Santa Maria and wherever else they may live and move around to access these free medications. For some of you who have never seen an application, it's pretty daunting. And so, we help the client complete their application, get all the attachments in, and then, once they secure the medication, then we help them on all of their renewals. Sometimes, they can be three and four a year. So our service is just people. We have two folks who work in the office, and so we requested the money to help us pay for that staff. It is a free service that we provide to our clients. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you all. All right. Thank you so much. Any questions from the committee? Okay. Thank you so much, Alliance for Pharmaceutical Access. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to Catholic Charities. Okay, it does not appear that there's anybody from Catholic Charities. Committee, is there a question that you have that maybe the site visit team can answer? All right. Sorry, Tim. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the people, I know that all the people there are new, running the programs at Catholic Charities, and I just, how did they, does everything look like it's going well? Does the place look good? Are they giving away the food and have the pantry still going?
The, Tim, this is Rosalie. They're still making some changes, but they're continuing having the pantry, and they distribute the food twice a week. And so, those that need to make, need additional assistance, they need to call and make an appointment. So, but they're still functioning as far as we're concerned.
Great. Thank you very much, Rosalie.
You're welcome.
This is Ron. In one of the statements, as far as the bullets points, staff concern regarding not submitting invoices and reports in a timely manner, did they address what they planned on doing as far as meeting that requirement? Or how was that addressed?
We addressed that at their interview, and they assure us that they have well submit their invoices in a timely manner. So, but we did address that. There was a concern.
Good evening. My name is Angie Bolden. I realize I'm going to have anyone going to check to see are they still on Main Street? Are they still in the same location?
I can, I can go ahead and answer that. Angie, yes, I actually just spoke with Catholic Charities earlier today. They are still on Main Street. There are no plans to move at this time. There were plans to move, not sell through. There are no plans to move. They are open to the public. They just actually did the distribution this morning. So they are up and running. They were only closed to the public for the pandemic.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions related to Catholic Charities, we'll move forward with Calm, Child Abuse Listening.
Evening, everybody. My name is Tara Conley. I'm here on behalf of Calm. And more importantly, on behalf of the children and families we serve countywide. I just wanted to share that we are again as grateful as ever for your consideration. I think in the last two years, all of us have experienced some measure of stress, anxiety, and uncertainty. And at Calm, we have particularly seen those impacts compounding on top of really complex mental health challenges and stressors that families are facing in the Santa Maria Valley. So having the support of the city truly equips us to meet that need and meet the moment for families who are really grappling with tough stuff these days. And some of the impacts that we've seen have been particularly marked in Santa Maria. Unfortunately, there has been a really dramatic increase in perinatal mood and anxiety disorders. So that's mothers with new infants struggling with their mental health. We've seen increased exposure to domestic and community violence in the community as well as really severe stress related to all measures of loss related to the pandemic, whether that's the loss of a job or a loved one. And that's all showing up in our clients' lived experiences, and our clinicians are spending really valuable time trying to help them navigate this unprecedented era. Forty-five percent of all child abuse and neglect reports countywide stem from Santa Maria. So we know that there is an urgent need for continued prevention work as well as response after abuse or trauma has occurred. And that's where Calm is right now. We are pleased to be providing services countywide, but know that our focus in Santa Maria has to be on prevention and meeting families where they are being embedded in the community, partnered with complementary agencies to make sure that everyone in this community has the resources and the support they need to thrive. So thank you so much for your consideration. I welcome your questions, and I'm always grateful to the team at the Special Projects Division. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions for Calm? All right. Thank you so much, Calm. Moving on, next on the list is City of Santa Maria Public Works' Pedestrian Safety Improvement Project. Okay, it does not appear that we have a representative for that project. Committee, is there a question related to this project that the site visit team can answer or maybe elaborate on?
I got a question, Rosie.
Oh, yes.
Where do I find the recommendations from council as to the capital?
I believe those were emailed to the committee, but we can definitely send those out again after the meeting tonight, and then we can discuss those further.
That'd be great.
On Thursday. Sure, sure. Will we send the City Council's recommendations?
It'll, it'll also be part of tomorrow's PowerPoint as well.
It's Ron Jacobs. On the, again, on the bullet points, we're, it says the upgrades will take place in the northwest and southwest areas of Santa Maria in the low-income to moderate areas. Do, is there kind of a specific area in particular, or is it just in general, northwest, southwest?
They just said it in general, and not in the Pacific. When we met with them, so no Pacific area, just north and west and southwest, the low-income areas.
And, and Ron, I can, because this, this project is, this is the second year that they're applying for this type of project. We, I can tell you a little bit about how year one's been going. They submitted a list of areas that need ADA improvements, and we run those areas through our system, through our database, through our HUD exchange website, and it'll let us know which areas are 51% or above low to moderate income. And so, those are the only areas that qualify. So they'll say, these are the problem areas. We'll run them through, and then we can let them know which areas meet CDVG eligibility and which ones don't based on the income of that census tract.
Thank you.
So we'll do, we'll do, if this project is funded, we will do the same thing again, where they will generate the areas that need the improvements, and we will verify that they're low to moderate income. If they are not primarily low to moderate income, which is 51% or above, they will not be done with CDVG funding. Okay. Moving forward, City of Santa Maria Recreation and Parks, Mayor's Task Force on Youth Safety Mentorship Program. This is a public services application. And then, following this one, we will move on to the capital application from Regan Parks. But first, public service.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Rosie. My name's David Rodriguez. I am the coordinator for the City of Santa Maria Mayor's Task Force on Youth Safety. Thank you for allowing me to speak and support a funding for a teen mentorship program. The task force's goal is to mitigate youth involvement in criminal activity, gang involvement and gang, excuse me, gang involvement and drug use. And by pairing at-risk teens through various outlets, excuse me. And we believe that by pairing at-risk teens with stable and positive adult role models, it's an impact, that's an impactful way where we can mitigate those factors. It's been nine years since the department last operated a structured mentorship program, and with the current deficit in mentorship programs for high school teens, we're prepared to do so again. So we hope to strengthen the retention of both the mentees and the mentors through the coordination of regular enrichment activities, that the pairs can bond over. And we hope that with this funding, we can establish a comprehensive program where we can not only provide that mentorship to the teens that needed, but also provide a direct provision of needs, of basic needs that not only the teens need, but that their families need as well. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Rosie, I have a question. This is Patricia. Um, how has this project been funded in the past? Because it's been happening for a while. So I'm wondering how, how it's been funded, and will this project continue without CDVG funding?
Yeah, so the last time this program was funded through our department was actually nine years ago, and it was through federal grant monies through the Department of Justice in connection with the POW program, which worked with law enforcement, local law enforcement, to provide mentorship and enrichment activities to teens. We hope to bring the program on again with CDVG funding. And in the event that we don't receive regular funding annually, we hope to provide a successful program that our part agencies, local foundations, and even state agencies that fund our programs might be interested in continuing to fund once those, the CDVG funding is gone. Also, the program is operating under the Mayor's Task Force on Youth Safety. And this is a task force that could potentially be funded through Measure U funds in the future. Should we no longer, should we show, excuse me, should we show success with operating it this?
Hello? This is Rosie. I have, I have a question. How do you outreach to the students to enter into this mentorship program?
Yeah, so currently, the Mayor's Task Force on Youth Safety works with our school district and with various agencies like Fighting Back, CADA, Communicify, Boys and Girls Club, and YNCA to target youth. Through the task force, we also meet monthly with teen leaders at Santa Maria High School and Pioneer Valley High School who provide feedback and input on the programs and resources that they need. And also, the agencies refer their students to us for services. We do have a full-time outreach coordinator who works, who's kind of boots on the ground and works with teens that are currently influenced by a lifestyle of crime or drug or gang involvement and works to deter them. So we do have the cohorts, we do have the students that we work with that we know we can tap into those pools to draw into this program. We're looking for funding to be able to provide activities that will be enriching and hopefully retain their membership in this program.
How many, how many students, how many students are in the program?
So currently, there's no, currently, there's no students in the program, but we hope that if the program's funded, that we can recruit 30 teens to pair up with adult, positive and stable mentors.
This is Ms. Bolden. Do you have where you do outreach to, this is my first time with, you know, multicultural, your kids from all walk of life involved in your program?
I'm sorry, Rosie. I wasn't able to.
I said, do you have where, do you do outreach where you have students and young people from all walk of life, just not one ethnic people, but kids from all walk of life in your program? And the reason why I asked that question, because I work with a lot of youth in the community, you know, so I was just wondering, you know?
I believe that the question that Angie's asking is, how do you incorporate? I believe that the question that Angie's asking is, how do you incorporate youth from all walks of life from different groups?
Okay, yeah, so for the, in terms of receiving input and feedback from students, our mayor's teen council is open to all students. And, but in terms of the mentorship program, we want to target higher-risk students who would be referred through agencies like probation, social services agencies, agencies like Communicify, CADA, Fighting Back, that have been working with these higher-risk students that just need a little bit of positive development, whether it's encouragement from an adult, a stable professional adult, who can just kind of guide them towards a different life choice.
This is Ron Jacobs. As far as your, the mentors, basically, who or how are they chosen? And what would you say, is it on a volunteer basis for the mentors, or are they compensated in any way?
Yeah, so it would be volunteering, so the mentors would not be compensated monetarily. But we hope to recruit these mentors from local networking organizations, like Santa Maria Professionals Connect, through the Chamber of Commerce, and also through law enforcement agencies, which we originally had recruited volunteers for, for the original program we ran nine years ago with the PAL Activities League and the Department of Justice. We also want to focus on young professionals and recent college grads who might inspire these students to look into higher education when they graduate from high school.
Thank you.
It's Tim Seifer. So each of the mentors, they donate 100 hours each, so 3,000 hours total is what I have on your application?
Yes.
And then, so I want to get this straight. There really is no program right now, and you have no funding right now. So without the CDBG funding, there is no program. Is that what I'm hearing?
Without the CDBG funding, there is no mentorship program for high school students. However, the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Use does have a mentorship program for junior high school students. But there would not be a program for high school students, either from us or from anybody in the city.
Gotcha. So, okay, so without this money, you don't exist, basically.
The program does not exist. Correct.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for City of Santa Maria Recreation and Parks Mayor's Task Force?
Yeah, really quick. Big Brothers Big Sisters doesn't do mentorship for high school students? Okay, maybe I'm asking a question that you can't answer because you're not with that agency, but my understanding is that Big Brothers Big Sister also has a mentorship program, and that goes all the way through high school.
My understanding was that, excuse me, that program and that organization doesn't operate in the city of Santa Maria. I might mistake them, but my research found that they no longer operate within city limits, Rosie.
I have that, I have not heard, but I would be interested to hear more about that.
Steve Delarson, I don't know if it used to be under FSA, or it used to be under?
It did. It did used to be under FSA, and I believe the people that have the contractor, the mentoring program now is CADA. But I'm not sure. But I do remember we transferred over our clients to another nonprofit and the funding that came with it.
And CADA's mentorship program is limited to seventh and eighth graders, and our mentorship program is targeting higher-risk high school students.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you so much, City of Santa Maria's Mayor's Task Force. Moving on to City of Santa Maria Recreation and Parks, Rosalynn Perlman Park Rehabilitation Project.
Hi, Rosie. Hi, members of the CDBG Committee. Thanks for having us today. We are really strong about this project because it is one of the last green spaces in our downtown area. As the community continues to build, and especially so on those four corners of Broadway and Main Street there, and potentially overtaking Perlman Park, we feel like it's a really important need for the community to have some sort of green space downtown. We currently have those high-rise apartments that are there, and they are often using that green space as their backyard. While we may not see a lot of people in that area of Perlman Park, if you were to continue to walk back through those apartments, there's additional green space there that a lot of people don't know about. So if you haven't seen the area I'm referring to, please park your car on the side street back there and take a walk through. It's a really nice area. What we're looking to do is to upgrade and include additional amenities. We do know that the Perlman Park is potentially up for sale, and we don't want to lose that green space downtown. There's a lot of, not only the residents of those apartments, but community members use that as a nice reprieve from the day to whether to go have lunch there or have coffee. The last time I went to visit, there was people sitting there on a blanket having a picnic. We saw two ladies drinking tea. So it is, it is a highly-used area that's not very seen. So we are requesting those funds to make sure that area stays within the downtown. It's a very important part of the community that's there now and will be the backyard for the new community that moves in to that multi-use facility they're talking about at Perlman Park. Thank you.
I have a question. Who owns the park?
The city owns both Perlman Park and the greenway between the apartment buildings, and so it is a city property.
Okay, because you said something about it'd be up for sale.
Yeah, so the corner of Broadway and Main is where Perlman Park currently stands. That's where the fountain, gazebo, and crazy playground are currently, and that corner is being marketed as a commercial property.
Oh. So is that portion be obsolete then?
The Perlman Park, yeah, the park that you see now with the gazebo and the waterfall will eventually be most likely a multi-use facility, so commercial on the bottom and apartments on top. So this, this part, the remnant of the park that we're talking about continues back between the high-rise apartments. Not very, not very many Santamarians know about that, so I do encourage you to take a walk back there. It's really, it's really pretty. We're just looking to upgrade that to make sure that the downtown area still has green space.
Okay, thank you.
So who owns the part you're talking about that goes back between the apartments? The apartment people?
No, the city still owns that parcel as well.
It's just a park right there on the corner of Main and Broadway, right there on the corner, coming from east side. So your right-hand side, you're coming down Main and East, and you cross Broadway. Is this the one right across, right across from the mall, but on the corner?
Correct. So it's on the northeast corner of Main and Broadway. You kind of have to picture, picture that parcel as kind of like a fat kite. So it's a big square where you see Perlman Park, but behind it is a whole linear path that goes all the way back to another street. And for some reason, I'm blanking, but on the name of the other street, I believe it's Mill Street. And so there's an entrance there as well, so people can get in and enjoy, enjoy that park space.
Yes.
Just a lot of people don't know about it.
Yes, I know what you're talking about, yes.
It'll be vital if we have more businesses downtown and more apartments for not only the residents of the apartments, but also for the community. If we have businesses like a coffee shop in there, it'd be great for them to be able to have outdoor seating, or, you know, just a nice relaxing green space area for those who live and work downtown.
Yes. Thank you.
Dennis, Bob Doyle. You're saying that you want this funding in one lump sum. Your two projects backed up from prior years.
Yes.
And rated fifth out of the five projects by the city council, so.
I appreciate that. I appreciate the hard questions, Bob. I do. You know, I love being on this side. I will tell you that I'm watching YouTube Live right now as city council is going over the Chapel Street project and will be awarding that bid tonight. Presser Park is also almost at the same point. Presser Park, we have an issue with, because a lot, a lot of people may not know this, but it used to be a landfill and has a cap over the landfill, so we're requiring special permission to be able to even put a path on that. So, you know, you've worked with us long enough to know that we do try to get our projects complete in a timely manner. Once they are complete, they're pretty amazing, and it's really all relevant to this committee because you're the ones that fund it. And I know Rosie will call me tomorrow and remind me of what's due and when it's due. But yeah, I understand the timeliness can be an issue.
My point is, is that if we could do it on a multi-level, in reality, you're not going to be able to get it done. You know, and so if we did some kind of funding this year and then immediately came back, we probably could get it funded and completed in a timely manner. So that's really just my question. I don't want to stick you in the spot there, Dennis.
It's all good, Bob. I don't mind. So when we met with the interview committee, that was a question that was, that came up. And yes, we are able to do that with this project. It's, you know, some of the bigger projects, it's much more difficult, but this project can be phased. And we can take a reduction in the grant award for this year. We wouldn't hope it would be too drastic that we couldn't show some, some progress. And, you know, with a project this size, and the funding doesn't require all the extra work that you go through when you do a large development, you know, large-scale projects, like we're talking about with Presser Chapel. These are creating smaller, you know, little venue spaces and event spaces that don't require quite the process.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thanks, Bob.
I've got another question, Dennis. Just trying to figure out what you're talking about. Why are we rehabilitating something that's for sale? And if it sells, is the whole park for sale? What exactly are you trying to rehabilitate and what is for sale?
Thanks, Tim. Great question, and I'm glad to answer it. So, like I said, the parcel is a very interesting-shaped parcel. You, what's most often seen is that corner on Main and Broadway. That's what we most often refer to as Perlman Park. But what, and we're talking about just that postage stamp corner on Main and Broadway that has the potential to sell. But if you go behind that, that property, that parcel, there's a whole additional parcel back there. It's very well-hidden, and that area is not up for sale. So what we'd like to do is to rehabilitate that park area to re-market it and show people a better entrance to use. Because right now, there's nowhere to park on Main and Broadway, so you could actually enjoy Perlman Park. But if you just go one block north on Broadway and take a right, there's a great entrance back there to this green space. So right now, we have a playground back there that's in desperate need of upgrade. There's some shade structure back there, but it's very, it's older, because I think most people don't see it on the day-to-day, so don't realize the work that needs to be done. So when we go through, I'll be honest, it had been, gosh, a couple, two, three years since I'd been back there before writing this application. So only that corner of Main and Broadway is the parcel that would be up for sale by the city to a developer. The back area would still be city property and still be usable by the public as well, you know, including those apartments, those apartments that are going in and those that are existing.
Aren't those apartments on federal property? Isn't that a federally-funded, low-income housing right there?
Yeah, it, yeah, I can't say this parcel is weird too much. This parcel is something that I'm happy to share. I believe it's in the application. I'm locked out of my city account right now, so I can't pull it up and share it with you, but it is, it is an interesting piece of property back there. And I wish I could sell it to you in a way by showing you a picture or giving you the video tour, but I understand that the restrictions at this time. That's why I just strongly encourage that you take a walk back there. You'll actually find it's a nice, quiet piece right in the middle of downtown. You know, and it's just a great respite for those who live and work downtown.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
It's really nice and quiet. On Main and Broadway, that whole area is really a beautiful area, beautiful sight for a whole park. That's why I'm kind of confused. It's really nice there. The whole area is nice.
Thank you.
Dennis, this is Rosie. Do you happen to have an aerial picture or something that is a little more visual that you can email me, and then I can email it to the committee?
I'm super happy to. Absolutely.
Just to give them a better perspective.
Yeah, and I'm sorry if that wasn't included in the application. I thought it was. It is, like I said, it's a, that corner of Main and Broadway is a pretty typical square. But there is a really big wide tail that still exists between, between those apartments. And it is the potential that we still could keep some of the property in the existing Perlman Park with the water fountain. But that building that, we've seen a couple of ideas come through, and the building that is going there. Tim, I hate to put you on the spot, but I may need a little help with this. The, I believe the planning committee has reviewed some other concepts for that corner as well. And we're talking anywhere from, I think, 24 to 30 units, you know, 3.5 people per unit. That's a lot of people in the downtown area that won't have a backyard. This would not only keep a great green space downtown for our residents, but also for those apartment dwellers, not only in the low-income apartments, but the new apartments that could potentially be on the corner of Main and Broadway. So yes, Rosie, short answer, I'll send you a picture.
Thank you. Yeah, there was a concept submitted in the application.
Okay.
But if you happen to have an actual picture itself, that would be great.
Absolutely. Any other questions I can answer?
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Moving on to Communicify. We have a public service application as well as a capital application. We'll go and we'll discuss the public service application first and then move on to capital. So Communicify Family Self-Sufficiency Program for.
Hi, my name is Natalia Alarcon. I'm representing the Family Self-Sufficiency Program with Communicify, and we provide integrated services to income-eligible residents of Santa Barbara County. Through case management and financial literacy, program participants collaboratively work with a case manager to set individualized and unique goals to meet their needs. Our proposal focuses on providing targeted services to seniors in the city of Santa Maria. Based on the 2020 census, nearly 10% of the city of Santa Maria residents are 64 years of age and older. Through our works, we have discovered that seniors typically are on a fixed income with minimal increases to social security benefits. As prices continue to rise, their ability to support themselves becomes more challenging. Providing case management services, including payment assistance, will provide additional relief to Santa Maria seniors. We also know that millions of seniors fall victim to some type of financial fraud. Our work with participants will also comprise of providing financial literacy in addition to fraud prevention. I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for ComUnify's Family Self-Sufficiency Program? Thank you very much. Any questions for COMUNIFY's Family Self-Sufficiency Program for Seniors?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
For some reason, I was under the impression that these services were duplicated, and when talking with Rosie, uh it seems like they're not. Can you please tell us how your agency uh does a service that no other agency does, because I was a little, I think I was not sure I understood when we when we talked to you the last time.
Yeah, absolutely. So our program, I find it to be very unique, because we have those client service dollars. And so we're able to provide some sort of a relief. So for example, for some of our seniors who live in the mobile home in mobile homes, their spa, they may not be able to afford their space rent. And so we would be able to provide case management services and provide short-term assistance and pay off some of their space rent to give them some sense of relief.
And and that's that's what you, so you're you're paying, uh you're paying seniors' rents? For like a i- i- for a month at a time?
Yes, that's correct.
And and what are some of the other things that you're doing, too?
So we're also doing fraud prevention. What we've seen is that with a lot of our seniors, um uh fraud, fraud is just so big. And so our focus would also to not only be provide them without without relief, that rental support, but also provide them with the education on how to avoid um any scammers or avoid them being in a in a financial, in a difficult financial situation as well.
Anything?
And the other thing I would mention also with our client service dollars is that they're incredibly flexible. So for and and our focus in case management is very unique to the seniors' needs. And so if we have a senior who's okay with the space rent or or rent, um but needs some assistance with their utility assistance bill or um uh or whatever it may be, we would be able to use those dollars towards that assistance. And then, of course, part of case management would also be to refer seniors to internal and external partners for additional assistance.
Thank you very much.
I I have a question. How did the seniors know about your program?
Yeah, so our Family Self-Sufficiency Program has been in inception since two thousand nineteen. Um and we actually have a long waiting list for our current program. However, in addition to just having a waiting list, uh we also receive referrals from internal programs. So through our Senior Safe at Home program and our weatherization program as well.
You provide um services to undocumented senior citizens?
Yes.
And is this only for um mobile home units? A space you, is that you help them out with the space rents, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so it doesn't have to do with a house or anything, just mobile home units?
Correct, that would be our focus.
Okay. Thank you.
The flexibility of your dollars wouldn't allow for um supporting rents that are non-mobile home space oriented?
We absolutely could. Um the focus for this proposal was specific to mobile homes, but um that's, I think that's the other great part of our our programs, that those dollars are flexible to meet the needs of the client.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Family Self-Sufficiency Program for Seniors? Okay, so moving on, we are going to go to COMUNIFY's Safe at Home Minor Home Repair Program.
Hi, my name is Kimball Lawrence, and I am here to represent the Senior Safe at Home Minor Home Repair Program. The Safe at Home Program provides simple home repairs such as fixing broken windows, damaged walls or flooring, and minor electrical and plumbing issues, as well as the installation of slip-and-fall prevention devices. The devices are tailored to each client's needs um within the home. The proposed program for Santa Maria will offer significant safety o- o- upgrades to our homes for the two thousand twenty-two program year. It will all be tailored depending on the client's mobility and disability needs, which may include grab bars, specialized toilets and toilet seats, uh modifications, interior or exterior lighting, access um ramps as well as handrails. So that is the program that we are proposing, and we thank you for your consideration.
Any questions for COMUNIFY's Safe at Home Minor Home Repair Program?
The, yes, uh this is only, uh this can also be for mobile home units, right?
Absolutely. That has been the primary, um primary applicants have been coming from mobile homes because of the mobility issues with the stairs that are currently there. So yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Hello, this is Esther. I just have a question. Why, since they do have a contractor's license, the reason why they, most of the work is contracted out?
All right, could you repeat that, please? Uh you were, you cut out.
Okay, I was curious as to what's the reason why most of the work is contracted out? Even though the agency does have a contractor's license?
We do have a contractor's license, but um one of our, another one of our goals um is to also support local businesses. So we found that it's a great partnership and it's a great opportunity to connect with contractors who live and work in the area. So we found that to be really more efficient, and it's also um more cost-effective for us because of the grand scale of some of our other programs, and we would just be able to weave in existing contractors to both the this project as well as our other existing projects that require contracting services.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for COMUNIFY?
I got.
All right, oh.
Uh if you're only partially funded, uh is that still gonna, are you still gonna be able to use that money?
Um i- if you're saying we don't get the requested amount?
Correct.
Yes, we will. We will continue to deliver the services.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for COMUNIFY's Safe at Home Minor Home Repair Program? All right, thank you so much, COMUNIFY. Moving on to Community Action Partnership of San Luis Obispo County and its Minor Home Repair Program. It does not appear we have anybody from that agency represented tonight. Does the committee have any questions? Well.
I've got one, Rose.
Oh. Hi, Tim.
Hey, so um weren't we having trouble, um weren't they having trouble last year expending their money? Uh they weren't, uh they weren't able to utilize the the grants. Uh how's that? Were they able to figure that out and and get back up to speed? I know in the past, they've done excellent work here, but I think that uh as of late, they were running into a few problems not completing the projects. Is that correct?
Alicia and Tash, would you like to add your thoughts on that?
Um so far this year, they've been expending their funding. Um we just received an invoice. It was a pretty large amount. Um and I think they only have about two projects left until they're able to fully expend their funding. So I don't think expending their current contract will be an issue. And from from what I remember, this is fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and it's not a carryover.
Great, okay, yeah, uh yeah, because I know there were some concerns for a while, so it looks like they uh it was just like everybody, they had a little glitch, and now they're back in action.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Correct, yeah, there is, um they were um one of a a couple of agencies that um had similar, similar issues expending the funds because of the pandemic.
Yeah, I'm I'm glad to see him back on board. Thank you.
That's Ron Jacobs. Just uh as far as in the past, just kind of a quick question. Did did they give an indication of how many people they've serviced um in the past? Like on a yearly basis, on average?
Hi, Ron. Yeah, we we actually have all of that information. Um we could, uh I could probably see through during this, this process, I could see if uh Tash can uh look that information up and we can report it back to you. Or if not, we can always just send it to you after the meeting, but uh since they've, we we have all that information, since we have to report it to HUD.
I I think just just as an estimate, it's about twenty to twenty-five, but it depends on how much funding they have. But we'll get the numbers to you.
Yeah, for the s- for the sake of moving forward with all of the other um agencies tonight, um Ron, if you're okay with it, we'll just provide you that information in an email after after the meeting, either later today or tomorrow, probably tomorrow morning.
No, that's fine. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
Um, Tim, did you have a um question or statement? You have your hand up.
I'm sorry, I just need to lower it. I had already got my answer.
It's okay.
Okay. No other questions for Community Action Partners Partnership of San Luis Obispo County? We will move on to Community Partners in Caring Volunteer Caregiving Program. Okay, does not appear we have anybody from Community Partners in Caring. Are there any questions that the site visit team can answer related to Community Partners in Caring?
Hi there. My name is Jan Masuko, and I'm representing Community Partners in Caring tonight. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Hello.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I was having a little bit of trouble initially with the uh mute button. But thank you so much for having us uh this evening. Um so hello, Rosie and CDBG. Um I'm representing Community Partners in Caring. My name is Jan Masuko, and I'm the Program Services Coordinator. And I'm standing in for our Executive Director, uh Velma Contreras, who has been on medical leave. So um uh just as a recap of who we are, we were founded in nineteen ninety-seven. And our mission is really to help those that are aging. So, you know, as we know, at some point, we we all age. Um and so one of our main mission goals is to help those that are aging, our senior demographic, to access basic needs like food and medical care and to be able to have that human connection. So um we were established, Community Partners in Caring was established to help those seniors that can't afford to pay for services or that have, you know, that lack of support. And as we know, like the past, you know, two years, um it's really been interesting during the times of the pandemic. And um CDBG is really helping support um our our programming, our volunteer caregiving program, which helps dependent seniors access their basic needs. So um from, you know, the accessing, the access of doctor's appointments and being able to take the seniors to and from their their doctor's appointment, providing that human interaction that they need. Um we are providing the access to basic needs such as food, medical care, therapy, um preventative care, and allowing those seniors to have that human connection through our volunteer caregiving program. So our services are free, and we're the only agency in Santa Barbara County that provides a service as such that is free um for that daily living and alleviating, you know, some of those stressors. So um some of the other things that this falls in line with is just reducing the barriers and and increasing the access to daily needs, um medical care, healthcare, food, and socialization. Um I know many of us have experienced the isolation even during the pandemic, so it's more important now than ever. And so we're thankful for the opportunity um to apply for CDBG. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Community Partners in Caring?
I have one, Rosie. It's Tim.
Hi, Tim.
Um so i- it sounds like the um you had trouble getting volunteers through the COVID because of uh people afraid to get sick or whatever. Um and and your volunteer hours went way down. I know you guys are pretty much one hundred percent volunteer-driven. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
So it, are you seeing any uh are you seeing any relief to that? I I the hours were like almost half. Are are you seeing any volunteers coming back or making any indication that they're that they're ready? Or are we still too soon in the pandemic um uh to 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 uh to see that?
You know, Tim, we have um launched a couple of campaigns to help with our volunteer recruitment. Um we actually have one going right now called Miles of Smiles. And so while we haven't seen a huge uptick just yet, we are seeing people slowly but surely creeping back in to kind of stabilize those numbers. And um we hope to get them back up and get everyone back empowered. One of our our mission goals for this year is to empower those volunteers, to reinvigorate their passion for wanting to help those seniors. So definitely, since we are volunteer-based and driven, um that is a key priority for us to get everyone back and to let them know things are, you know, we do provide PPE kits, our CPC PPE kits, uh Community Partners in Caring PPE, um and the sanitization trainings and making sure that everyone feels safe. So that's one of our other goals and in alignment with getting people to feel back, um you know, to some form of normalcy, those that are volunteering.
Yeah, I I I hope they, very much.
Thank you.
Um Rosie, I was on the site visit. Can I highlight one thing?
I am Patricia, uh Angie, did you have a question as well? I think Patricia, uh I'll have Patricia ask her question, and then Angie, if you have a question, uh we'll go, you'll be after Patricia. Sound good, sounds good?
Okay, great. It was um kind of, I just wanted to highlight, because I was on the site. To add, um that although their volunteers decreased, they increased the number of people served um with the hours and and the volunteers that they had, because the visits were shorter, so they were doing other things. But I just, I was really impressed by that little piece. I just want to highlight it.
Great. Thank you, Patricia. Okay, Angie.
Uh what did it age in your volunteer work, those that volunteer, what did it age?
So they actually, Angie, um during the pandemic, we did see a huge uptick in um some of those twenty-one-plus uh students, for instance, some of those that go to Allen Hancock, sort of kind of pitching, which is a different demographic. But a lot of times we have those empty nesters, um you know, those within the the middle age range that are retired or um really just looking to help. So our our demographic of volunteers does range from the student level through retirees. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions for Community Partners in Caring? All right. Thank you so much, Community Partners in Caring. Moving on to Domestic Violence Solutions Emergency.
This is Marilyn Simon-Gerssack. I'm the new Executive Director for Domestic Violence Solutions. Thank you for having us tonight and including us in the program. Uh Domestic Violence Solutions has been serving the Santa Barbara County since nineteen seventy-seven. And we we are striving to ensure safety, support for victims of domestic violence and interne violence. We have a, um excuse me, a residential domestic violence shelter in Santa Maria that has eleven apartments. And I have invited our Program Director, Vero Cudillo, to tonight, and she is going to share with you a little bit about the service and what happened there.
Hello, everyone. I, uh, thank you very much for the introduction. I'm Assistant Program Director for DDS. I started as a advocate, so I've worked here directly with our Santa Maria community, um North County area. Uh since um we condensed our shelters to just be in the Santa Maria and Santa Barbara location, our Santa Maria North our Santa Maria North County office has had a major influx of different types of clients from all over North County, but specifically for Santa Maria, the trend tends to be most of the clients served here at our Santa Maria Shelter are Santa Maria residents, with a few from out of county or from South County. Typically, the families we see here are either with family sizes of four or more or some single clients. Over the last year or so, we've had roughly about 50 something clients or so due to COVID. We did have to put a cap on the amount of families or individuals we can serve due to staffing and shelter regulations and whatnot. So.
So we greatly appreciate the opportunity to request funding to pay for part of a salary of one of the advocates that maintains the staffing of the shelter. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Any questions for Domestic Violence Solutions? All right. If there are no questions for Domestic Violence Solutions, we will move on to Family Service Agency of Santa Barbara County, Family Resource Center.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight with me. Well, first of all, I'm Stephen Delara from Family Service Agency and Santa Maria Valley Youth and Family Center. Tonight with me is Maria Castro and Paul Catan. I want to finish the conversation we had with those that were interviewing us about collaboration and collective impact and let you know that we are currently working with Communicify on a Grant and Fighting Back Santa Maria and the Santa Maria Police Department to address violence in the Santa Maria area as we had 122 shootings last year in Santa Maria and two homicides just down the block from one of our agencies. The 17-year-old that was shot on February 7th, our family outreach advocates went out to the home to go meet with the parents and the children, took food, counseled with the parents, talked with them, and referred the parents to our Family Resource Center Counseling and other services that are in the Santa Maria area. I like to think of Family Service Agency as not a wait-and-see organization, but rather a see-and-do organization. We went to the home of that child without being requested. We saw a need and we went there. Santa Maria, in terms of the pandemic, has 24,000, over 24,000 cases recovering, but we currently have 343 active cases, which is 140 more active cases than Lompoc. And we have 244 deaths, which is the highest death rate in the county. Those people that have COVID have been going to our centers and seeking resources, including the Family Resource Center as a place to get services. I'll turn this over to Maria. Maria?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for your time. Maria Castro, Program Manager for our Family Resource Center here in Santa Maria. I just wanted to share a little bit about what will be the outcome if we do not receive funding. Without this funding, there will be 47 families in the community of Santa Maria that we will be unable to serve. Providing the funding, these 47 families will receive support with CalFresh, Medi-Cal, Cash Aid, rental assistance, housing support, and HEAP applications. They will receive interpretation support to link to needed services such as counseling as well as support completing an application for clinic or hospital bill relief. The families would receive linkage to local resources such as housing, food bank list. They will receive dental kits, clothing for their children and newborns. Families that have experienced abuse in the home will receive case management and a one-on-one instructor to parent class to strengthen their parenting skills and family unity. Fathers hoping to become better fathers or learn how to co-parent with the mother of their children would take our dedicated dads class. Our children in between curriculum as well as receive support with securing employment and learning about financial stability. Couples that would like to strengthen their bond and become better parents would be able to take our Connected Couples, Connected Families class. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Any questions for Family Service Agency of Santa Barbara County, Family Resource Center? Tim Sefer, do you see?
Thanks, Rosie. Yes, thank you for that. I saw on the application it said you serve 80, 80 clients, but in your, what you just said, you said 47.
80 is correct, Tim.
80 is correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Steve. Okay, perfect. And was she correct in saying that if, that without this money, maybe that none of those 80 people are going to get anything, that it all relies on the CDBG money?
Maria can elaborate a little bit more, but we do offer services to the community. This would allow us to service 80 more families than we are already serving.
Okay, thank you for that.
Any other questions for Family Service Agency? Okay, thank you so much, Family Service Agency. Moving on to Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley Homeless Transitional Youth Services. Does not appear we, it does not appear we have anybody from Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley. Are there any questions for the site visit team? Okay, moving on to Food Bank of Santa Barbara County, Santa Maria Warehouse Food Distribution.
Hello, good evening. My name is Lauren and I'm the Grants Manager at the Food Bank. We did have a scheduling conflict and we missed our site visit, so I'm happy to answer any questions about our proposal. So to sum us up, the Food Bank, our mission is to transform hunger into health throughout the county and we're celebrating our 40th anniversary this year. We are kind of the nutritional hub of the county. We distribute food both through our extensive partner network. Many of those agencies are on this call this evening. Hello. We also distribute through our direct-to-client programs, including mobile food pantries, kids nutrition education programs, our senior program, and our Healthy Farm Workers Program, which is a newer program where we provide food and health education directly on-site for Santa Maria farmworkers and their families. So our approach to hunger includes three layers. The immediate relief of hunger through food distribution, always focusing on fresh fruits and vegetables. The second is providing client self-sufficiency and education through nutrition and food literacy skills and CalFresh outreach to have people enroll. And then the final layer is community resiliency through disaster preparedness and response. So we've been in the disaster response mode for basically the last two years, starting to transition out of that mode. But to give you a sense of that, in a typical year, we distribute 10 million pounds of food. And in the last fiscal year, which ended in June, we distributed 18 million. So it has been, we've been an important part of this response to COVID, community-wide. So Santa Maria actually makes up the majority of our clientele. About 60% of countywide clients live in Santa Maria. About 35 to 40% of those are children, about 12% are seniors, 52% are women, and about 80% are Hispanic or Latino. Currently, we are in a transitional phase. We're reopening our in-person nutrition education programs. Our in-person distributions are of course going on. We do have a lower partner network than we had before the pandemic. A few have closed their doors. So pre-pandemic, we had about 100 partners. The 2021 active partners list was about 70. So to fill in those gaps, we had the Safe Food Net program. And now we are just kind of transitioning back into normal. And grant funds from Santa Maria will be used for food purchases. And like I mentioned, about 40% of all that we distribute is fresh fruits and vegetables. Thanks so much. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Hi, Tim. Go ahead.
On the, oh gosh, I forgot my question. On the FEW distribution. Crud. You scared me when you answered my name.
It's okay. It happened.
Yeah, I know. I'm interested in the, I was also interested in the new program for the farmworkers. That's a new program that you just started this year? Newish. We started it in July 2020. It was, it started, I think, just at four sites once a month. It's now at, I want to say eight sites twice a month in rural areas, going directly to the fields and bringing food boxes with hand carts for farmworkers. We have paid nutrition education. They're called promotoris. They're educators. So they provide onsite education. It's always bilingual, but we also do visual formats for mixedых speakers. So that program has been really successful. So we're continuing it on. We just got a grant from Feeding America to expand the program with Ventura Food Share. So it's going to be, we're going to be doing shared food buys to make it more efficient and kind of just combining resources. Is it volunteers or paid workers that are going out to the sites? How does that work? For distributing the food? It's a combination of staff and volunteers. The promotoris are paid. Nice. And then your buying power for every dollar that you take in, how much food are you able to? There's a ratio. You're able to buy a lot more food than a normal person, right? Yes. So through Feeding America, the California Association of Food Banks, which we're a member of as well. And then we have a lot of food, you know, 40 years of building food relationships with grocery stores, growers. We say that for every dollar donated, it translates to about eight meals. Eight meals. Oh, eight meals now? Wow. And then when you said about your partners, you're down to 70, is that the people like the farmers, the growers that give you the food? Is that? So that's, no, that's agency partners. So like Catholic charities or the Boys and Girls Club. So some of them, you know, didn't have enough funding or their volunteer support fell apart. So they temporarily closed during the pandemic, but some have permanently closed. So we have filled in those gaps through our own programming. Yeah, there's, yeah, people are still closing, actually. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other questions for the Food Bank? Okay. So moving on, I did want to ask Ryan and the rest of the committee, would you like to take a brief break? We're about halfway through the agencies. Or should we move forward with the other half of the agencies?
I'm fine if we keep going, but if a number of members need a break, we can do that, a short break for a couple minutes. But I prefer we just keep going.
Yes, minutes?
Yep.
Perfect. I'll be right back. Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take a five-minute break.
Yeah, that's good.
A three-minute? Or we could put three minutes on the clock if that helps.
Three minutes is fine.
Three minutes? Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, we'll be back in three. Okay, we are ready when you are. How's it looking, committee members? Ready to proceed with the other half of the agencies?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, the recording is in progress. Next up is Good Samaritan Shelter. Now, Good Samaritan has two public service applications and one capital project application. We'll start with Public Service Application Freedom Warming Center.
Great, thank you. Good evening. My name is Kirsten Kahuna. I'm Director of Homeless Services for the Good Samaritan Shelter. First, I want to say thank you to the committee for your consideration and continued support of Good Sam. It's always an honor to be amongst such amazing other agencies that most of you, we get to call partners. So the Freedom Warming Shelters were established several years ago. They were actually named after Freedom, who was a homeless neighbor in Santa Barbara that froze to death on a very cold night in Santa Barbara because they had nowhere to go. So that is when the Freedom Warming Shelters were established. And for the past several years, they had been run by the Unitarian Society, which Good Sam had partnered with previously as the facilitator of the warming shelters. But we had let them do it for the past several years. So we are back as the program provider for the Freedom Warming Shelters. And we are asking for the committee's support in ensuring that we are able to continue to run these warming shelters. They begin in November every year and last until March. We open these shelters when the temperature drops below 35 degrees or there's a 50% chance of rain or higher. So we operate them at the Salvation Army. They're an incredible partner on this project for us. And if we can't use the Salvation Army, we are able to use city facilities as well. So on these evenings, we open a no-question-as shelter at one of these facilities where folks can come in. And these are usually the most vulnerable homeless on the streets that are just looking to get out of the weather. So these folks don't normally access shelters. So this gives us huge opportunity to put our hands on these folks and gather information and be able to help them access services that can help them get back on their feet. So this year, we've already activated about seven times. We haven't had very much inclement weather. So we will continue to activate until the end of March, if we hopefully get some rain. We have served about 45 unduplicated clients. This is the first year that this program is actually utilizing the homeless management information system. So all of the clients that are coming into the Freedom Warming Shelters for the first time are being entered into our countywide database. So we're able to gather the data and be able to connect them with really important services. So we're hoping that you can continue to support this project so that we can continue to assist the most vulnerable in our community.
Thank you. Any questions for Good Samaritan Shelter's Freedom Warming Center? Okay, if there are no questions for the Freedom Warming Center, we'll move on to Good Samaritan Shelter's Homeless Shelter Programs.
Thank you. So as many of you know, Good Samaritan Shelter has been running our emergency shelters since 1988. We are the largest homeless shelter provider in Santa Barbara County and the only homeless shelter provider for emergency shelter in Santa Maria. We are continuing even during COVID as we've seen a huge increase in need for homelessness in our city. We have increased services. We actually opened additional shelter beds during the COVID crisis and continue to serve clients. We never shut our doors during the pandemic and we have done nothing but increase services to the community instead. We have served during last year 471 unduplicated clients in our Santa Maria Emergency Shelter and 140 of them were children. We have about a 40% rate last year, even during the pandemic, of transitioning these folks into permanent housing. We're lucky enough to have rapid rehousing money and diversion funding in order to be able to connect our clients to homeless services and housing. So we have worked really hard to increase vaccination rates amongst the homeless. We do street outreach in order to ensure that we are able to contact and provide services to the vulnerable homeless that are on the streets and try to bring them into our shelters. We are the only GPD, which is the Grand Perdiem Veteran Bed Provider in Santa Maria. Or there's one other provider in Santa Barbara as well, where we have 10 beds that are dedicated to homeless veterans in our shelter. We also have beds that are dedicated to mental health clients. And we work really closely with Dignity Health in order to provide respite beds to homeless clients that are in the hospital and need assistance afterwards. Good Samaritan depends on this funding to continue to provide these services and to be able to leverage this money for other funding resources. Hector Harone, our CFO, is also on tonight, so he can answer any questions as well. So thank you for your continued support of the Good Samaritan Shelter.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Good Samaritan Shelter's Homeless Shelter Programs? Tim? Tim?
Thank you, Rosie. So it looks like, um, you, you have capacity for ninety? Is that what it is? Ninety per night and they get ninety days, uh, max per year at the homeless, uh, shelter?
Yes, we're a ninety bed shelter. They get ninety days and then they're reassessed if they're meeting all of their criterias and working their case plan, they're allowed to get a month to month, um, extension after that. We do know that it takes about six months on average to take somebody from homelessness into permanent housing.
And what was your success rate again on getting them to the homeless, um, getting them into a home?
Last year it was about forty percent. Which with a less than two percent vacancy rate in our county is pretty significant. And these are folks that come in with no documents. And so most of the time, our biggest goal at the beginning is just to get them document ready because you can't secure housing without social security cards and birth certificates and all of those things, so.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Good Samaritan Shelter's, uh, Homeless Shelter Programs? Okay, moving on, then we'll move on to Good Samaritan Shelter's Kitchen Equipment Upgrade, which is their capital project application.
All right, uh, good evening, committee members. Uh, this is Hector Hino and I'm the CFO for the Good Samaritan Shelter. Um, Good Samaritan Shelter is requesting, uh, funding to purchase and install new commercial equipment, uh, at the San Maria Shelter, which is located on the four one West Morrison Campus. Um, the existing, uh, commercial kitchen equipment that's there, it's over, um, fifteen years old. Like, I believe it was originally installed in two thousand and four. Um, and so the lifespan of kitchen equipment is usually between ten to twelve years. And so we've, uh, used the, the equipment, uh, a lot. Uh, we put a lot, a lot of hours in, into the equipment. And so uh, a lot of the, uh, equipment is either falling apart, it's starting to fail. And so we, um, incur a lot of expenses as far as repairing and, uh, keeping up with the equipment. Um, you know, the, the project is very vital, so we can continue to provide basic, uh, uh, meals and services for the, uh, the homeless individuals, uh, living at the shelter. Uh, with over a hundred and sixteen homeless, uh, persons living on campus, uh, it's, it's really hard, difficult to provide, you know, uh, meals without having the proper equipment. Uh, before the pandemic, we used to have community group members that would come every night and serve, uh, the shelter residents. Um, but once the pandemic hit for safety and other reasons, uh, a lot of these groups, uh, ce- ceased, uh, serving the meals. So uh, it was up to Good Samaritan to, uh, figure out a way to provide the, the meals for all, all of the homeless clients. So if we get funded for, uh, for this request, uh, we will coordinate the installation and the, uh, meet any funding deadlines that are necessary to install the equipment. Uh, again, I, uh, thank you for your time. And if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer any, any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Good Samaritan Shelter's Kitchen Equipment Upgrade Project? Go ahead, Tim.
Hey Hector, if you don't get the whole amount, you're asking for two hundred and fifty-eight. The city is, uh, they've got a lot of programs this year that they, uh, that they're looking for some money on the capital also. Um, it's probably gonna be, um, I don't think there's enough money to go around at this point. Is there a way that you can, uh, phase this in? It would, uh, if you didn't get the whole two fifty-eight, is there an amount that would work for you or you've got to do it all at once? Um, what, what's your feeling on that?
Uh, hi, Tim. Uh, yeah, so, um, if we don't get fully funded, um, I believe we can face out the, uh, the kitchen, uh, equipment. So we could probably do, um, the, the equipment that is most needed or that is needs more where, uh, it, it's in more need and then needs replacement right away. And then we can move on to the next, to the, in the second phase, we can move to the equipment that could last a little bit longer. But yes, we can definitely make it work into your, or, or two or two phases. Um, yeah, I mean, I, if we had half of the funding, probably do half of the equipment now and then half of the, of the equipment later next year, if that's, uh, what, what it needs to be done.
Great. Thank you, Hector. Yeah, there's just no telling right now. There's, uh, as you know, there's only so much money. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
I have a, I have a quick question, Hector. I was hoping that you can comment. Not just for this, uh, project for, but for your other projects about, um, how does the money that you get from this, um, from this help leverage other dollars, whether it's state or county or federal dollars? And could you give us an idea of what? If it's a match or how mu- you know, how much does that help you?
So, um, uh, on this specific project, there was really no, uh, other match. Uh, but we use this to, uh, offset some of the costs, you know, that we would incur if we had to purchase uh, meals, outside meals, um, or i- if we had to, um, you know, of course, uh, cooking the meals in-house is cause, comes at a much lower price than getting the meals prepared or from the outside. So in that way, we would be leveraging some of those, those funds. Um, you know, we, we have multiple funding sources that Kirsten was saying at the shelter. We, we, we try to, um, uh, le- leverage as many funding sources. We, we have contracted dignity. We have contracted the county. We get general fund dollars and, and we, we have a budget of over nine hundred thousand dollars in between eight hundred and nine thousand dollars to run the shelter three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So putting all these, uh, y- little pieces of, of money together helps us, uh, run the shelters, uh, smoothly. And, and so every li- little dollar, every dollar counts when, when you're talking about providing services. And so, um, you know, the, the funding that is gonna help, you know, purchase the new equipment is gonna help by reducing the food costs in, in a sense.
Thank you. Tim, do you have an?
I, I do. Thanks. Um, real quick, uh, Hector, uh, it used to be that you shared your kitchen, um, with the CAC. Are, are you the sole people using that kitchen now or is someone else still using it?
Yes, after, uh, you know, we came into the pandemic in, uh, the early months of the pandemic, uh, CAC stopped using the kitchen, um, they, um, they couldn't continue cooking the meals. So, um, so they, uh, I believe they, the, uh, contracted or subcontracted their services to, uh, different contractors. So at the moment, yes, we are the only ones utilizing the kitchen.
Thank you.
Hector, this is Ms. Bo. Do you, uh, still have, uh, outside organization that comes in and volunteer and helps serve food or whatever?
We do continue to, sorry, we do continue to use, um, volunteer groups. Um, some of them are just bringing and dropping off because of the pandemic. We just have not been able to allow people to come in and actually cook in the kitchen and serve directly to our clients during COVID. But we do still have some groups that, um, are coming in and just dropping off for the clients. We're trying to keep our volunteers in track as much as we can. It's been really, really difficult during the pandemic and we've had to provide not only our regular dinners, but because, um, we've, you know, encouraged clients to stay in and shelter in place and had, um, you know, different isolation orders. We've had to supply three meals a day instead of just the dinners.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Good Samaritan Shelter's Kitchen Equipment Upgrade? Okay, thank you so much. Moving on. Independent Living Resource Center Services and Outreach to Individuals with Disability.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Jennifer Griffin. I'm the Executive Director. Um, and joining me in another Zoom box is Jaden Gaines, our Program Services Manager. Um, for anyone who's not familiar with us, the Independent Living Resource Center is a peer-run cross-disability organization. Um, our headquarters location in Santa Barbara opened in nineteen seventy-six. And we opened our Santa Maria office in nineteen seventy-one. Um, our services are provided to any person of any age with any disability of any income level. Um, beyond the services we provide and in the way they are provided, uh, what makes us unique is that our board and staff are comprised primarily of people with disabilities. Um, over eighty percent of our board of directors and staff are people that identify with significant disabilities themselves and are the best, uh, equipped to understand and provide ser- services from a shared perspective. Um, Independent Living Centers came about as a result of the independent living movement in the nineteen seventies. Uh, it changed the way that people thought about disabilities. Instead of treating a person like a patient who needed to be cured, the independent living way of thinking put the person first. Um, our CDBG funding helps cover the occupancy costs for Santa Maria offices. Uh, the services we provide, uh, both out of the office and remotely as needed are benefits, assistance, uh, information and referral, uh, advocacy, personal assistance, housing services, emergency preparedness, independent living skills and assistive technology. Uh, we also have a sign language interpreter registry to help our communication access for individuals who are deaf. Um, our services enable our consumers to live more independent lives and continue as or become active members within their communities. Uh, during COVID, several of our services we've always provided became more critical to our consumers' daily lives. The digital divide was given a much-needed spotlight in twenty twenty and as many people were suddenly unable to pers- participate in life due to their lack of technology and the stay-at-home order. Um, we were able to provide over eighty-three consumers with Chromebooks, technology training and low-cost internet resources. Um, and we've just actually purchased an additional forty Chromebooks with our CARES funding to address our waitlist. Um, you know, I want to thank you for your diligent and thorough work. I know that you guys are tasked with the difficult job and I appreciate how seriously the committee takes it each and every year. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Independent Living Resource Center?
Yeah, and you s- and how many people do you serve?
Uh, for the city of Santa Maria, I'd have to look back at what, I don't have our grant right in front of us. Um, so I'd, I'd have to get back to you on that.
Rosie, I, I read a hundred and thirty, but I don't know if that was just Santa Maria or not.
Yes, if it's on our, on our grant, it's just for the city of Santa Maria.
Okay, thank you.
And, and then I have a quick question too. Uh, the assistive tech, uh, wh- so wh- what exactly is that?
It's a variety of things. Um, it can be something, uh, as, as, as maybe as easy as getting a consumer a, a seat riser or, um, uh, a- access to an iPad or Chromebook, up to something more difficult like being able to provide a ramp to get into their home. Um, grab bars, things like that.
Nice. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Independent Living Resource Center? Okay, thank you so much. Moving on, we're, I'm moving on to my cap, Mixteco Indigenous Community Organizing Project, Puente de la Comunidad or Bridge to the Community.
Thank you so much. Hi, everyone. My name is Anna Nguyen. I am Program Director for Mixteco Indigenous Community Organizing Project, or MYCOP, um, for the offices in Santa Maria. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to explain why that consideration for funding for our organization is crucial and necessary. Since expanding our services, our office has been able to support the many indigenous migrant community members that reside in Santa Maria and its surrounding areas. We have been able to support families and individuals with very basic needs like food and shelter to be in there for emotional support and well-being. Just one quick testimonial. Our caseworkers helped a single mom who is a monolingual Mixteco speaker from Oaxaca. She's a survivor of domestic violence that fought for the custody of her children after her abusive husband took them away from her. She's now able to receive support with Medi-Cal, uh, the Public Education System, Mexican consulate, police department, child wel- child welfare services and others. The client continues to work with our team because she has found safety and trust in our tril- trilingual caseworkers. The funding will ensure to continue, the funding will ensure we continue to help with cases like this one. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for MYCOP? Puente de la Comunidad. Hi, Tim.
Hey, that's so impressive. Um, hey, you know, uh, last time I saw you guys, you had, uh, there was like a device uh, that for, uh, translation, but it's, but there's so many different dialects that it was very difficult. Have we come any farther along with uh, translation and communication, uh, with these languages that, uh, that, I guess, what it says, only fifteen percent speak English, uh, Spanish. Uh, they, otherwise they speak the Mixteco. Uh, have we, have we done anything on that ground?
Thank you. Um, we have learned so much. We have learned that you, you were perfectly correct in that there are so many different variants that when we find one interpreter to interpret for a particular case, uh, um, there are multiple others that we don't have interpreters for. So we, um, it's very difficult to use devices. So I'm not sure which devices you're referring to. Are you referring to, um, like interpretation equipment?
Yeah, that was, yeah, it, it, but it didn't seem like it worked very well.
Yeah, and that's cultural, um, because the community is very much, um, uh, oral, the, the language is oral. Uh, for them, it's, it's a bit of a challenge using the, um, the devices. Or, um, sometimes agencies have tried using, um, interpretation lines. And what we have learned that has worked best is just that one-on-one interpretation. Um, having the ability to sit with a person and again, provide them that trust, that sense of, of security. Um, so that the, so that the client can open up and share and answer questions that are being asked of them. Um, sometimes there are difficult questions or, um, difficult conversations, say, at a doctor's office. So the doctor needs to be able to get the proper, the right information from the client. So it's crucial to be able to, to build that connection with, um, the interpreter so that we can relay, uh, correct information. So we're, we're, and we're still learning so much.
Yes, it's so difficult. Thank you so much.
Uh, how large is the community? And how many, uh, people are you able to serve?
Um, my associate director can get you exact numbers. I, I'm not aware of the data. I'm not a hundred percent sure. What I do know is that whatever data we have regarding how big the community is, it's ten years old or over ten years old, like from the last census. Um, previous to that census. But I would love to be able to give you that information. If we can email it back to you, I can check in with my associate director, so we can send that off.
That's fine. And with this, but, and with this funding, um, how, um, how many do you anticipate you'll be serving?
Uh, I get numbers that my associate director can, um, can provide.
Well, I see about a hundred and forty. Would a hundred and forty sound like a reasonable amount?
Yes, yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Six hundred.
Six hundred? Yeah, oh, you got, you found it? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Tim.
Yeah, just to clarify, according to their application, the program will serve a hundred and forty unduplicated persons with two hundred and eighty units of service with the CDBG funds. So that's just strictly CDBG funds. That's not the entire program.
Right.
Thank you, Rosie.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to New Beginnings Counseling Center, Safe Parking Shelter and Rapid Rehousing Program.
Hi, good evening, um, committee members, City of Santa Maria staff and our nonprofit partners. My name is Diana Suarez and I am the North County Case Manager for the New Beginning Safe Parking Program. I'm joined today by our, um, Executive Director Christine Schwartz, our Homeless Service, Services Director Sarah Grasso, and our Safe Parking Programs Manager Cassie Roach, and our North County Law Monitor and Outreach Worker Patty Faulkner. It is our pleasure to be here with you all. The Safe Parking Program is the only program countywide, um, solely dedicated to providing vehicle shelter and rapid rehousing services to families and individuals who live in their vehicle. Over the last year, our program has expanded throughout the county and into the city of Santa Maria. During this time, we have been able to build upon the success of our supportive services for veteran families program in North County and form collaborative partnerships for safe parking with other providers, um, like Santa Barbara County Department of Behavioral Wellness, Good Samaritan, CNET, and the North County Collaborative, among others, to ensure that Santa Maria residents are aware of our services and are able to connect with us. The Safe Parking Program is actively engaging with residents of Santa Maria and connecting them with supportive services to help them not only obtain housing but retain it as well. Having provided rapid rehousing services countywide for more than ten years, New Beginnings has housed over a thousand families and individuals. Just this past year, we provided rapid rehousing services to eight hundred and thirty-six households, housed one hundred and ninety individuals and provided one point two million in temporary financial assistance to our clients. Of the twenty-two clients currently enrolled in our in our North County Safe Parking Program four are located in Santa Maria. Another fifteen San Maria veteran households are also being provided with rapid rehousing services through our Veterans Program. One example, clients served through our Safe Parking Rapid Rehousing Services would be that of Jose and Rosa. Jose and Rosa were homeless seniors panhandling on the streets of Santa Maria and were connected to our program through a local concerned citizen. Once enrolled, our clients were temporarily housed in a hotel at the height of the COVID nineteen pandemic to ensure their health and safety. During their stay there, our staff worked endlessly to locate suitable housing for them, which we were able to find in a cozy studio apartment. Since then, we have been financially assisting Jose and Rosa with the rent and have connected them with local resources such as the Brown Bag Program and the Santa Maria Wisdom Center. We continue to be involved with them to ensure they remain stable and comfortable in their housing. With your support, we hope to continue assisting more of the residents of the city of Santa Maria, just as we did with Jose and Rosa. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for New Beginnings Counseling Center, Safe Parking Shelter and Rapid Rehousing Program?
Yes, I have a question because I know that currently in our city there's ordinance in place that prohibits any parking in the city limit. So where are these people that you're connecting? Where are they being safely parked?
You are correct, actually, Rosalie. Thank you for bringing this up, that there isn't anywhere in the city of Santa Maria where we are allowed to operate a lot for safe parking. So we can't speak to any locations in the city of Santa Maria where there are people safely legally parking. And we have opened a lot in Lampoc and are working on opening up a couple of others as well as lots in county-owned properties, but we have not been able to open a lot in Santa Maria yet.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I will add one thing. However, we do work with people who are residents of the city of Santa Maria and who are living in their vehicles through our rapid rehousing services to get them connected to housing. So even though they're not in our lot, we're still serving them.
So how do you outreach to these people? How do they know? Yeah. How do they know they can get your service or or you go to them?
Sure, we've actually been very active with outreach and Diana and Patty. You might want to speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, definitely. We partnered with local Santa Maria organizations, so like Be Well and City Net. We've gone out there and visited locations that we are aware of where vehicles are usually parked at. And we posted various flyers. Patty has made various trips up there as well with local AmeriCorps members. Just also visiting locations where vehicles have been reported to park.
Thank you.
Rosie?
Yeah, go ahead, Tim.
So have you guys made any inroads with the city council or the mayor? Have you done any kind of groundwork to get this ordinance overturned so that your program can thrive here? What are you doing proactively? Thank you.
We have, and Sarah, I am going to ask you to to address that question.
Sure. Good evening. I'm Sarah Grasso, Homeless Services Director with New Beginnings. Recently, Ellen Hancock has reached out and has expressed interest in hosting our program. We also recently met with a representative from the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce. We have been invited to an upcoming meeting in March to hopefully partner with members of local businesses to get the word out about our program and our services. And we we hope by working collaboratively with these agencies and others in Santa Maria that we can work towards reapproaching the city and potentially being able to open, you know, a lot or two. Definitely recognizing a need and it's being identified by the individuals and other organizations that we're able to collaborate with in this regard.
Thank you. And actually, in addition to that, we've also built relationships with local faith-based organizations to that end as well.
Yeah, hopefully you're working on the ordinance. That's the that's the that's the key right there. Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions for New Beginnings Counseling Center? Okay, moving on to North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center. Thank you so much. Santa Maria about Santa Maria services.
Good evening, everyone. Anne McCarty, Executive Director for the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center. And with me tonight, somewhere in the screen are my Finance Director, our Finance HR Director Karen Powers and our Associate Director Allison Wales. It's no secret about what we do in town. And as the only agency in the city providing the services we do, it's a little hard to argue the importance of our work. But I think what's most important to know is that we do not profess to do this work alone, nor do we do it in a vacuum. However, each of us before you asking for funding does indeed play a critical role in the health and safety of our Santa Maria community. I won't lobby against them, but will ask that you look at the work we've done over the last thirty-nine years in Santa Maria and judge us on our merit for that. Providing critical emergency crisis services to victims of sexual assault, child abuse and human trafficking is what we excel in. And the need for our work continues to grow. Like many of our partners in the room tonight, we have indeed seen a dramatic increase in the need for services and we don't see that need leveling off anytime soon. Our counseling program remains full with new clients added daily and the need for responses to the Santa Maria Police Department or other locations within the city following the report of an assault hasn't slowed down at all. Nor has the need for ongoing services following an assault slowed down at all. We are also extremely proud of the work we do on the educational side of the house whereby we are able to provide educational opportunities that help keep our communities' children and adults safe. We are indeed grateful for the consideration and appreciate the partnership that exists with Santa Maria CDBG and helping us provide these critical emergency services and educational programs to those in need. So thank you so much for the opportunity to apply. Thank you for listening. After tonight's meeting, I'm changing our agency's name to start with an A. But we're just so appreciative of you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Hi, Tim. I see.
Hey, Rosie. So if you don't get, you can do with a partial amount. If you didn't get the whole eighteen thousand, you can do with a little less.
Um, well, sure. I mean, we're not gonna, we're not gonna turn the money down, but I can tell you that the rent has increased in the city and, you know, we had been pretty pretty level with the amount of rent that we were being charged for, gosh, for a lot of years. But there's a new landlord and he rose our rent quite drastically. I was able to negotiate not so high of a bump, but he will be increasing it. And that's why we did ask for more this year simply because our rent was raised.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other questions for North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center?
It's Ron. I was on this team and I'm just got one quick question in here. During our meeting, you know, you notified us that you're short-staffed. Do you need to hire some additional people? Has there been any leeway on that since our meeting?
Um, no, sir. I can tell you that we have advertised so stinking much and like many of my fellow social service agencies in Santa Barbara County and actually across the state. We're all suffering from a loss of staffing. But we have not been able to fill the positions in Santa Maria yet. We're still I've got Lampoc staff that come over and provide services in the city of Santa Maria because the need is still there. You know, we haven't, we've been very fortunate, knock on wood, that we have been able to maintain all of our services at the level, haven't cut any programming. We have modified a lot of things, but we've been able to maintain. But we do need to fill those positions because it's hard because the 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 need has risen. You know, I'm not going to say that the number of people has dramatically risen, but what everybody needs has just risen exponentially over the last couple of years. So the positions are not filled. We're still trying. If you know anybody, we have two two openings in the Santa Maria office.
Hey, thank you.
Certainly.
Any other questions for North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center? All right, thank you. And I and thank you to all those whose agency name does not start with an A or a B or a C. We appreciate your patience. We were just trying to figure out a way to make it you know, the easiest. Next year, we'll start, we'll start from Z. We'll go backwards. How's that?
Actually, Rosie, this has been fine because, you know, as each alphabet letter keeps going down, you know, my heart rate keeps going up, but and it's all good. So I know that my blood is flowing well and I'm a healthy individual, so it's all good.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on, we have a Northern Santa Barbara County United Way Home for Good AmeriCorps. And it does not look like we have an agency, I mean, a representative from Northern Santa Barbara County United Way, but are there any questions that the site visit team might be able to answer?
I got a question. So is this just for the showers? That's kind of what I was reading in the thing. It's 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 the Home for Good. It says Home for Good, but it's a shower program, two sites open twice a week, three hundred and eighty-two people served, five hundred volunteers, three thousand hours yearly. So the the team, this is a shower program?
Yes, they have a mobile shower unit that goes to two areas, one at the Salvation Army and the other one is at the Power of God parking lot. And at those sites, they provide Chick-fil-A provides the food for the clients at the Salvation Army, but at the sites, they provide clothes, hygiene products besides getting their showers. One of the faith-based churches, the Crestwood Fellowship Church, they do the driving to move the showers around the unit around, but they set it up and set it up, but they also do the laundry of the towels. They also provide clothes for them that those that need clothes. And so like, for example, one person would receive approximately a hundred and four showers plus the meals and the change of clothes on an annual basis. So we were excited when we interviewed them because they were able to remotely show us a site that they they had clients there that were going, taking showers and we were able to see where they have the clothes set up. And then they also have an area, some agencies will come and provide services to them, for example, mental health or whatever service that they need. So I mean, we were excited to see it was it was really a good deal because the Methodist church no longer provides the showers anymore like they used to.
Wow, thank you, Rosie.
Bob Doyle, just a comment. When we were at the shelter, they pointed out, even though they have their own showers, that when they were in lockdown because of COVID, that they brought those showers over there and serviced them too. So it's 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 a good project. It's a shame the Methodist church, I I think the Methodist church has been closed down really for the whole pandemic. So maybe they'll open up again.
Thank you, Bob.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to Partners in Housing Solutions. Anybody from Partners in Housing Solutions? Alma, yes.
Yes, hi. I'm Alma Harmson, Executive Director at Partners in Housing Solutions. And with me tonight is Sarah Dell Hanover, our Bookkeeper and Contract Manager. Our mission at Partners in Housing Solutions is to help homeless individuals and families find and retain permanent housing. We do this by connecting them to units from our network of private landlords. Clients are referred to us by partnering social service agencies and we work with them to find housing for our clients. What makes us different is that we work with landlords and offer them incentives and securities so that they could help us help our clients. On average, we house individuals within two to six months from being referred to us. And the county average is six months. So, for example, just last month, we had a client referred to us by one of our partners sitting at here in North County. And this was a senior who had been housed for many years on a fixed income. He had a part-time job and when the pandemic hit, he lost his part-time job. He was also asked for his unit. He surrendered his unit because the landlord was coming back to live in the unit. And soon after, he had, he he faced what many Santa Barbara County residents faces that his income was not enough to meet a landlord's financial criteria. He ended up living on the riverbed. And one week after he was referred to us, we were able to house him with the landlord who had just offered us a unit. Now, I won't say that it always takes us just a week to house someone, but this is one of those stories that just really drives a point as to, you know, why we do what we do and, you know, allows us to show that our resources are really there to help those who are in desperate need.
Thank you. Any questions? I see, Tim, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Rosie. I probably forgot to put it down. Yeah, I did. So it looks like your your whole total budget is under half a million dollars?
Yes.
So, okay, and so you're basically working on a shoestring and it looks to me like you have forty-seven Santa Maria landlords on your list?
Correct.
And then there was something about a safety net for the landlords, like a three thousand dollar safety net. What is that?
Yeah, so all the landlords that we work with, we offer them up to three thousand dollars as a financial safety net should something go wrong. And, you know, our client evicted or there is damages, you know, when they, when their lease ends, this is something that the landlord can claim from us as an additional safety net for, you know, working with us.
There was something about matching funds on this. Is there did I write that down? No, you match clients with rental units and you have case management. That's what I wrote down. Okay, so that's true.
We have case management for, so we also work with the Department of Social Services and we have one case manager who does housing case management for those clients, but we work with partners across the county and many here in Santa Maria who offer case management and we do the housing search placement and help with the retention services. We're also the primary point of contact with many of the landlords. So we realize that one of the biggest barriers that we face when we're talking to a landlord about working with a public service agency is that, you know, this is their business, so they don't really sometimes want to work with us because they say, well, last time I housed someone, you know, and there was something happened, there was no one there or I had trouble reaching someone. So we have a twenty-four hour turnaround hotline for help with questions for the landlord. And because we meet with our partners regularly, we could relay these issues to our partners and help resolve these issues together.
Thank you very much.
How how does the how do how do people reach you? How do you, how do you? How do you, how do you reach these people to house them? Or how do you, you get referrals or?
Yes. So we work with thirteen partners countywide. And our partners are in the front lines, you know, we work with CityNet, we work with New Beginnings. We've worked with Good Samaritan Shelter. And so the clients that they're serving many times get referred to us and we help with placing them into units.
And how long have you been in business?
We've only been around for six years and in six years, we've housed over nine hundred and twenty-six people.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Bob Doyle, just, I did a site visit. I, I would want to point out that they had, and correct me if I'm wrong, eighty-five percent of the clients they place in one year are still in place. And that is a really high number if you look at public housing and the type of clients we are putting into these units. And I think everybody should remember that because if you get them in a house and they don't leave, they're gonna do better, but they have, it has to be that partnership between landlord, agency, and services. So, so I just, fun to point that out because that's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob.
Any other questions for Partners in Housing Solutions? Okay, moving on. People Self-Help Housing Corporation, Feminino Scholars Education Program.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. Hi, Joanna.
Awesome. Good evening. I'm excited to share about my program. My name is Joanna Dominguez and I'm the Director of Education for People Self-Help Housing. We are the largest affordable housing provider on the Central Coast. My organization focuses, of course, on assisting with homelessness and the education program I run provides much-needed services to help our residents and the surrounding community with free site-based educational services, including after-school programming and college club services. In addition to affordable housing, we provide free services for our residents to help them get out of poverty. Here in Santa Maria, we have a learning center at our Loja de María Apartments and Marijosa Town Homes apartment complex. We serve six hundred K through twelfth-grade students throughout the year and we are a year-round program where they're for students and families year-round and not just during the school year. Our business focus is on helping underserved youth reach grade-level literacy and get them on target in their academics in order for them to be able to go to college. Many of these families work long hours and because of the language barrier are unable to help their children with their homework. And we serve a critical link for their academic success beyond what their school day teachers can provide because we serve them from year, for, for years since we provide services right where they live. We continue to successfully help our students despite the pandemic this year. Although it was a difficult year, forty-six percent of our students improved in their reading level. And I'm also super excited to share with you that to date, we've had a hundred percent college graduation rate for our college club students. We focus on building strong relationships with our parents and students. And without these critical services, many of these children would get lost in the shuffle and would not have the opportunity to thrive in their school setting. The dedication our educators give the students is unlike any I've ever seen and well worth in, in, well worth investing in to continue offering the amazing services provided to our Santa Maria residents. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for People Self-Help Housing Corporation's Feminino Scholars Education Program?
Do you guys have any other funds, any other funders for something like this? I know we, we funded a lot of the, the buildings and we funded programs like this for you before as you're a very large corporation. Is there, is there other money out there?
There are. Our, all the services side of People Self-Help Housing is entirely funded through grants and private donors. We don't have access to the, the building funds. So it is a bit of a challenge to, to fund our services side of the house, but there definitely is other funds available.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for People Self-Help Housing Corporation? Well, okay, moving on. We've got two more. Santa Maria Valley Meals on Wheels Meals on Wheels Program. I don't see Colleen Sinclair on here, but does the committee have any questions that the team might be able to answer? Tim?
Um, just an observation really. I mean, I've, I've been to their place a number of times and it still looks like they're doing meals for three dollars a week, I mean, a meal. It's unbelievable the way they're able to keep their funds down and, and utilize their money and make every dollar count. I haven't seen any, I didn't see any changes in what they're providing. So, no, it's just a, they've, they've always managed to use the funds very well in the past. Just a comment.
Yeah, and, and, yes, I see that in the application. It says three dollars a meal, well below our actual cost of seven dollars per meal. So their cost is actually seven dollars per meal, but they will only charge about three, which is less than half of what the cost, overall cost of a meal is.
Pretty amazing.
And that, that is under the target population section of the application, which is, is number seven, under number seven of the application, if you need to reference it. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Rosie.
Okay, and last but not least, the Salvation Army Hot Lunch Program.
Good evening. How are you? Thank you very much for your support. My name is Alexis Villanueva, Mayor. We are, we are working in this project, in this program. This is wonderful because the people need the food. I bring the hot food, lunch for days a week. We are ambition to open one more day, Fridays. We are excited because we see people coming, the homeless, um, families, the childrens coming to the food. We have a support to the food, food bank. We had USDA programs bring their food. We have donors and a lot, but we provide this service. The situation right now is for the work for good, good lunch. This is the focus, pay the payroll. And this is why I ask for the money. And another way, we are provide or buy the food. But thank you very much for your support and we are continuing to serve the community.
Thank you. Any questions for the Salvation Army's Hot Lunch Program? All right. Thank you so much. Thank you to all of our agencies, all of the agencies that participated tonight. Now we move on to public comment and this public comment period is reserved for items that have not been addressed or agendized throughout this meeting. So at this time, if anybody would like to unmute and share anything related to their agency that is not associated with the CDBG funding process.
I will like to share that the home test kit distribution that was sponsored by the Public Health Department, our agency was able to participate countywide. And I think that was a very successful campaign. I know that other nonprofits that are on the Zoom meeting with us also participated. And I think it goes to show the collective impact of our city when the nonprofits come together, working together, helping each other, distributing masks and/or, in this case, the test kits to all of these people that may not have otherwise got it. One story is an elderly woman that came in. She was having trouble buying the test kits. She would have to test before she could see her elderly husband in a home. And so we were able to provide her some tests. She was paying upwards of forty dollars a test on Amazon because the prices had went up. And just so you all know, if she wins the lottery, she's gonna give half to our agency. And it was just her way of really just saying thank you. And that's one of many stories. I've talked to other nonprofits and they also have, has, have also experienced the same success we have had in distributing those test kits to our community.
That's great. Thank you, Steve, for sharing that. Dennis, I see you have your hand up.
Uh, thanks, Rosie, and, and thanks, committee. I just wanted to readdress Bob's question tonight earlier about Chapel Project. And just, I'm, I'm watching two screens, YouTube Live, and of course, this one. Council did approve the bid project for Chapel Plaza tonight and we're thankful for them. And there was a protest, but it was clarified and the project will be moving forward. So thanks, committee. We look forward to another exciting project and working with you guys.
Thank you. You sure know how to have fun. You're watching us and city council at the same time.
Crazy and wild Tuesday night at my house. Yes, absolutely.
We gotta take you out, Dennis. That's, that's not right.
No dogs barking in the background, so we're good.
All right. Anybody else have anything they'd like to share? I will take a quick moment to share that we have our, our monthly electronic newsletter. Please feel free to send us anything you have that you'd like to promote. That's what it, that's what it's there for. It's there to assist you in your outreach efforts. So whether it's looking for an employee or services that you have that are offered, that are offered to the, the general public, anything of that nature, please send it us, send it our way and we will be more than happy to include it in our newsletter.
Rosie, I have another announcement that I think everyone would want to hear. And that is Pacific Pride Foundation will be joining us at 105 North Lincoln to provide services here in Santa Maria. So during, during the pandemic, they had to move out and now they're back in the Santa Maria co-house with us. And there should be some news information going out in the near future from them and our marketing people and all the people that do that kind of stuff. But they signed the, the lease and they're joining us and they've hired one staff, they're looking for another. And so it's just really good to have them back in the city of Santa Maria. We miss them.
That's wonderful news. Yeah, they missed here in this.
Did the tattoo removal people?
No, no, you're thinking of Liberty Tattoo Removal, which is under Capslow. Pacific Pride Foundation, they, they serve those who are HIV-positive and also the families, as well as other, other programs and services that they offer in the community.
I wonder how I got those mixed up. Thank you.
No, yeah, just to clarify, it's, it's LGBTQ support in the, in Santa Maria for trans and for gay. Uh, yeah, people and it's just the LGBTQ community at large.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry. I got, I went back to my CDBG days. But of about ten years ago, we, they, we would provide them funding for their Santa Maria office. But it was pertaining to the, the, those experience, those suffering with HIV in the families. So I apologize. You're, you're right. Thank you, Bat BCA, for correcting me. I was just focused on the program that CDBG funded about, gosh, ten, about ten years ago because I think we were funding them when I first started. And then, I, yeah, it was a while ago.
That's how we started, for sure. Thank you.
Yeah, but thank you. This is, this is.
Well, I want to thank everybody for taking the time tonight to be here and do your presentations. I, I know it can get tedious and it can run long and especially those of you who had to wait towards the end to present. We appreciate it. We appreciate you, all that you and your agencies provide to the community. And the longer you're on the committee, the more you find that the, the resources that you all provide and how valuable they are. It makes it so much harder for us come time to deliberate. But we, we certainly appreciate it. And so with that, I'll just remind the committee members, if you haven't, to please review the, the grants and be prepared to deliberate on Thursday. And I don't have anything else. Rosie?
No, we will see you again at five thirty on Thursday.
Great. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting at eight o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time.